And I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item C, adjustments to the agenda.
Yes, Mrs. Thomas, members of the board, we have one amendment to recommend for the agenda. It's to add to J, new business, the consideration of the acceptance of a grant award.
I move that we add that to the agenda.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Item D, approval of minutes. For April 11th, 2017.
I move we accept the minutes as presented.
I second that.
Discussion? All those in favor? Item E, communications.
There were three letters of resignation, which I will address in my report.
Item F, public participation. Item G, administrative board reports. Our student board member is not here this evening, Mr. Clifford.
Good evening. You have my report. Tonight will be a little shorter than some others. So last week, we identified the valedictorian and salutatorian of the class of 2017 and invited them tonight. The valedictorian is Ashley Hudson, and she's not with us tonight. She's at the high school for the show, Hamilton, she's in Hamilton. But as far as Ashley's achievements, so she earned a 98.63 grade point average through her four-year career. She participated in show choir, jazz band, basketball, one act plays, fall musicals, jazz choir, French club, TRIM president, pep band, band, National Honor Society, and National Science Honor Society. And she's going to Fitchburg State University in the fall to major in biology with a pre-veterinarian concentration. So congratulate, congratulations to Ashley, and she is the daughter of Warren and Tracy Dowling of Ellsworth. And our salutatorium, I'd love to bring up, and that's Jillian Dow. Come on up, Jillian. And Jillian will graduate with a 98.59 grade point average through her four-year career. She took 12 honors classes and four advanced placement classes activities also. She was in Eastern Maine skipper's program, outing club president, stage manager, International Thesbian Society, National Honor Society, National Science Honor Society, Student Council, girls soccer, indoor and outdoor track and field. And she will attend the University of California at San Diego in the fall to major in marine biology. And she is the daughter of Stephanie and Brian Dow of Ellsworth.
Congratulations.
And a week and a half ago, we did have a Melmac trip. We had 35 students, they were sophomores and juniors, that went down south, to Southern Maine and visited Bates for half a day, University of Southern Maine for half a day, Southern Maine Community College on that Friday, and then toured Chimbrow on the way back in Pittsfield, and it was a terrific trip. Any questions?
Thanks, Dan. Mrs. Peterson Roper. And Mr. Newitt. I have Mr. Newitt's report for you tonight. He would like you to know that concert season is coming to an end. This past week, 4th and 5th grade was held, and tomorrow, actually, yes, tomorrow, there'll be the chorus and band concert. He also had, there'll be on May 31st, a visual and performing arts showcase that will be featuring soloists and small performing groups, as well as students' art. The Greek and Roman, then medieval festival is coming in May. Grade 7 study of ancient Greece and Rome will include Olympic Games. In June, the medieval unit will include medieval fair, which is set for June 14th. Everybody should know that date, once again, June 14th, it's a lot of fun. And that is open during the day for kindergarten through 8th grade, and it's a lot of fun for everybody. Goes into the evening until about 7:00. In co-curricular news, EEMS hosted a Lego robotics meet on May 20th, or will be on May 20th, in order to test their robots in a variety of events against area peers. And then Thursday and Friday, May 25th and 26th are the dates for the drama's spring play. And that's all about Greek and Roman myths, it's at 6:00, and you're all invited. And for parent news, we share the same, so I'll move on to my report. So our work and the K-3 level continues with the Momentum Literacy Pilot. As you know, we became part of that pilot back in January for iPads for kids in grades kindergarten and first grade, one-to-one in grades 2 and 3, one-to-two. And we will move into the fall pretty seamlessly, and everything is getting in. If you haven't had a chance, parents, to ask your children about Quests or eSpark, please do, because I've been in classrooms and it's amazing what children are doing. They are recording, they are, what April Clifford used to say, creators of their own work, and it's pretty cool. We'll be continuing our partnership with CFO in the fall of 2017. And their last day is on Thursday this week. And their enrollment will start right back up in June, and so please call Jamie Spencer at CFO. And if you need that phone number, you can call the school to get it. And our kindergarten registrations, we've had all three nights, and we have 71 students registered at this time, which is about what we had last year around this time. So we should be around that 85 to 90 enrollment. The walking school bus has had a wonderful year. I'm sorry to say that this will be the end of the grant, and therefore probably the end of the walking school bus. Judy Fraser took that over from Dave Norwood, but they have both done an excellent job along with the committee, and we are just really thankful that we've had that experience. I think with the sidewalks continually being built in Ellsworth, that hopefully that we will take a look at how we can get kids walking to school on a regular basis. Our PTF is really active. Last week, they had a wonderful teacher, actually staff appreciation week, where they had breakfast on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and Morton Moo offered ice cream, which is always fun during the PLC. And they have, also be sponsoring our Walk-a-thon, which is coming up on May 19th, Friday. You should have received packets that came home. That is the only fundraiser that we do at the K-4 level, and that's how we sponsor things like teacher appreciation, but more so, we have rainforest coming at the end of this month. And it's an assembly where they'll have lots of rainforest animals that will actually be live and well. So that's kind of exciting. And last, we have many students who participated in the college essay for the Maine College Circle. There are 31 scholarships given out to students this year in the Frenchman Bay area, so that includes Hancock, Peninsula, LeMoyne, all that area. 24 of those students were ours, which is pretty exciting. And our recognition ceremony is this coming Thursday at 6:30. You're all welcome to come. It's pets, they do an excellent job. Bob Stewart does an excellent job introducing each child and about what they are aspiring to do, and then we share pizza. I'd like to name the following children who were selected. And FYI, there were over, as I said, I didn't say it in here, but we had 115 students who actually did the essays from Ellsworth, and we did have a little mini celebration at Morton Moo. Every child got an ice cream. We delivered the applications to Mr. Higgins and then walked over and had a delicious, actually, we took the bus this year because it was pouring rain. But 3rd grade, we have Ally Brown, Bailey Clayton, Bridget Cutney, and Gabe Leathers. In 4th grade, we have Maverick Ashbourne, Addison Atherton, Hunter Bowles, Noah Dintonato, Brandon Hamby, Olivia Layton, Pablo Little Siebel, Griffin Merrill, Ashlyn Reardon, and Griffith Young. In 5th grade, Noah Boubier, Winslow Hanson, and Natalie Sawyer. And in 6th grade, Skylar Clayton, Casey Carter, Elizabeth Ford, Savannah Hasham, Rose Kasimrazak, Caleb Leathers, and Madison Page. We're very proud of everybody who tried. It's a great way to think about what you want to be when you grow up. Any questions? Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce to you Abby Welch, a senior from Ellsworth High School, who is my selection this year for Student of the Year. Abby is the daughter of Coralie and Larry Welch, and has attended Ellsworth High School and attends our Health Occupations Program. While at HCTC, she has earned her AHA Healthcare Provider CPR First Date Certification, her CNA, and her certification to pass meds as a CRMA. She has earned her CNA and has been working for the past year as a professional in the medical field in long-term care and skilled rehab at Seaport Village. She often helps train new staff and students that come to the facility. She was honored as our Rotary Student of the Month in February of 2016, was our Silver Medalist at Health Knowledge Bowl last year, and went back this year and earned Gold Medal. She will be representing the state of Maine at the National Skills USA Competition in Louisville. She has also been inducted into our National Technical Honor Society and has been very involved in volunteer work and with the life of HCTC over the last two years. She has volunteered at various dinners, attended our Boggy Brook 5K for the last two years, and has been a mentor at our middle school camps. Outside of HCTC and work, Abby is a regular volunteer at the Sorento Baptist Church and working with children in the nursery, and has been a regular participant in Relay for Life. Abby is a hard worker with a kind heart, is highly collaborative, and will no doubt do great things for our community in the future. Abby will be attending University of Maine Forkett to achieve her bachelor's in nursing, a very competitive program, and we wanted to honor her and say congratulations. She was honored at a banquet for all MACT Student of the Year students at the end of April, and we will honor her again at our HCTC awards ceremony at the end of May. Updates on a couple of programs at HCTC. First, law enforcement. We had our pepper spray training this past week, one of the most awful days of the year to watch. We had 16 students who went through the pepper spray training. A special thank you to MDI Police Officer Tim Land for his organization of this event, as he has in past years. We also welcomed some Eastern Maine Community College students and a professor as well, who also participated in the training, so kids got to do some collaboration with students in college. I also wanted to give you some numbers for post-secondary opportunities for kids. Currently, we have nine seniors that are in our Year 2 program that by the end of this school year will have earned six college credits, and will have earned a college transcript through Southern Maine Community College, as they've done a dual enrollment opportunity with their law enforcement program. And we have 13 Year 1 students who took advantage of a three-credit course, and they'll have the opportunity to pick up the other three credits next year. That was a new opportunity this year for our students. Diesel Technology and Automotive Technology students will be taking their big ASE certification exams the week of May 20th. And our diesel students will be attending the Heavy Equipment and Logging Expo in Bangor. This is the second time we attend this, and our kids typically really love that and interacting with business people. Our preschool Caterpillar Clubhouse closing ceremony will be May 25th with the theme, "All the Places You'll Go." And we will honor all of our little preschoolers as they wrap up their year. And we have had our open house for next year's Caterpillar Clubhouse. Currently, we have 18 students registered, which is above normal, and I suspect that we'll get more. We do have a few more slots available if students are interested. And May 10th will be their NOCTI Early Childhood Certification exam for that. We're very excited to announce that our biomedical science students are going to be going to Jackson Lab, and some will be doing job shadows with scientists to look at what research they're doing, while another group of students will be going to the Jackson Lab Symposium, where scientists present their research findings for the year. So we'll have students that are able to go to one or the other and get some really great experiences at Jackson Lab, and we thank them for that. We will be hosting our Second Annual Opportunities Fair through our Melmac funding on Thursday. We have over 26 businesses and colleges coming for that day for students in the AM and the PM to be able to meet and mingle, look for summer jobs, as well as future opportunities. Just an update on enrollment. We have had a lot of adds and drops over the last couple of weeks, and we are still staying at 256 for the fall, which is actually really good. We've had just as many adds as we have had drops, so we've stayed really stable, which is really exciting. Skills USA Nationals fundraising, May 20th is our indoor yard sale. If anybody has donations of things they would like to be sold at an indoor yard sale, please drop it off at the school, and we'll take it off your hands and put it in the yard sale. And May 23rd is Taco Tuesday, which is donation, come eat between 5:00 and 7:00, and all proceeds will go to the National Skills USA trip. Finally, we found out today, Brian Langley is putting forward a new piece of legislation for students that are under 18 being allowed to work through the Department of Labor in certain industries if they have earned their CTE certifications. And one of our welding students was asked to go testify in Augusta tomorrow. Ethan Kane, Katrina Kane's son, was selected because he's been offered a job this summer as a welder, and because he doesn't meet the age 18 requirements of Department of Labor, he can't accept the job, even though he's earned multiple certifications and has the safety certifications as well. So he will be Brian's guest tomorrow and be testifying on behalf of the bill so that he might have the opportunity to go to work. So we were really proud about that. Any questions?
That's great.
Thank you.
Good evening. In curriculum news, after input from the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Team and the Leadership Team, the Teacher Guide to Proficiency-Based Instructional Expectations for the Ellsworth School Department has been shared with all of our teachers this past week. It contains a list of research-based effective strategies that are found in classrooms that are student-centered and individualized at many times during the day. So this will serve as a district-wide guide to assist in common discussions across schools and a basis for teacher planning and district professional development. We've been having these conversations for many years, but now we are standardizing the language and standardizing the expectations across the district so that all the teachers have the same message from all of us and that we can share conversations across schools now. In our math resource review, teachers are finishing up piloting one or two lessons from programs that they are reviewing in their classrooms so that they can get feedback from students and teachers. A representative committee will analyze the teacher and student reviews on May 23rd and discuss the two programs that are most preferred. Teachers have been asked to document their questions about the different products, and these questions will be addressed by the publishers of the two finalists about their product. So the teachers have actually demoed a lesson with students to get feedback about what the students think about it, and you know, how they interact with the different materials. The entire math staff in the Ellsworth School Department will then vote on the final selection at each school. So every math teacher, every teacher who will be impacted by different resources will be able to compare the last, the final two choices and be able to vote on which one they would most prefer to use in their classroom as a resource. And finally, our Title 1A Advisory Committee and teacher group met on April 21st. We met with parent advisors who looked at our parent communication forums and gave us some really helpful input on some updates that we made. They gave us a lot of good suggestions. These are forums that are going home, talking about student achievement and monitoring student progress during the year. And the parents who joined us were extremely helpful in giving us some feedback about the best ways to communicate with families. So we're very grateful they came in very early in the morning and shared their time with us before going to work. So we're grateful to the parents for their support. And also, I would really like to also acknowledge our Title 1 teachers, who have been, who dedicate their work to their students every day. Kelly Venedestein, Aurora Stickel, Tina Young, and Kelly Rudolph have spent a lot of time planning these documents, working on that meeting, bringing in parents, and also planning our Parent Literacy Night, which will be held on May 25th at 3:00 PM at EEMS. And so there'll be games and books and literacy demonstrations and ice cream so that we can share home strategies about reading with your kids and working with your children, and that we hope to see all of our Title 1 families come and join us that night. Do you have any questions?
How many teachers are trying the new math resource in their classrooms?
All of the math teachers.
All of them are?
Yep. They've all, they all came in to look at all the resources that we brought in from different, we've got recommendations from different districts, from neighboring districts, from other districts in Maine. We used different reviews about the best resources that were aligned to the Common Core standards. So we used all kinds of data to choose, in some cases, upwards of eight programs to look at. And we had each of the math teachers come in to meetings to look through all of them and share their feedback with each other about the programs, the samples that we had. And then each of the teachers agreed to take one of the resources back to their classroom and work and provide a lesson. They all chose a particular lesson or a particular strand that they were about to work on anyway and provide a lesson to the kids using that resource. And then we created kind of a table where the teachers could input some of the kids' comments and rate the different qualities of it, the readability of it, the attractiveness of the resource, how well it helped them understand the concept, if it gave them space to, you know, write big numbers in some cases, in other places, if it was clearly written, and help them, you know, compare the different strategies they were using. And we've gotten some great feedback. It's amazing that really asking the consumers is the best way to go. The kids have had some really good feedback for us to think about in the different resources. And they thought of things that even the teachers didn't necessarily notice. So it's been a really good process. That'll be wrapping up this week.
That's great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Higgins.
Good evening, members of the board, members of the audience, members of the viewing public. First item I'd like to report on tonight is to, in accord with Policy DN, Disposal of Surplus Equipment, notify you that we are declaring as surplus 370 MacBook computers that were part of the 2008 deployment. So they've been used in the Ellsworth School Department for eight years, and they are of limited value. But we will, part of the policy is to notify the board that we're declaring them as surplus, and then we'll be working with Tech Director Clifford to dispose of them through that policy. And if there are questions specific to that declaration of surplus, she's ready and willing to answer any of those questions. Legislative update will be a lot shorter than it was last month. I think you heard Mrs. Bowles mention that there's a bill being submitted by Senator Langley that's just being submitted now. I'll tack on to that by saying the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee is continuing to conduct public hearings and work sessions on bill submissions. Even though they've been requested to finish their work by May 12th, they're still getting bill submissions. I report that because they're really furiously trying to get their bills reported out and put towards the legislature. The one bill that we were hoping to hear something about tonight would be a budget bill, so we could incorporate that into our budget that's being presented to the public this evening. But unfortunately, there's no information on that. Statutory adjournment date is June 21st, so I suspect that next month the legislative update will be a little bit more informative. Members of the public, excuse me, the Facilities and Transportation Committee, Paul and Kelly, Paul Markovich and Kelly McKenna, met with City Manager David Cole, Public Works Director Larry Wilson, City Counselor Steve Beatham, and Project Engineer Arrowhead Affine on April 24th to talk about the status of construction projects and road projects that will impact and involve school department property. And I know members of the board, we talked about this at your last workshop, but I think it's important to report this out for the members of the public. As we all know, work has resumed on the Route 1A project, with one of the final components being the transition from the current Ellsworth High School entrance adjacent to the tennis courts to the new entrance directly across from Forest Avenue. One of the things that we learned in that meeting on the 24th is that rather than transitioning to the new entrance while school is still in session, Department of Transportation and the city were able to work out an arrangement whereby that work will not be done until after the final student day on June 19th. That'll permit us to take care of end-of-school-year activities without the challenge of trying to teach everyone that there is a new entrance different than the one we've been using for the last 20 years. But following June 19th, the transition will begin. The traffic signal in front of tennis courts will no longer be operational and be removed, and the traffic signal down at the Forest Avenue entrance will be operational. So we'll mention that at next month's meeting so that members of our public are prepared to use the new entrance. The other piece that I'm not sure as many people are as aware of would be the stormwater drainage system enhancements that are taking place. And this is in conjunction with the Route 1A project. The storm drain apparatus from Route 1A all the way across Pond Avenue, across Ellsworth Elementary Middle School into Leonard Lake is being replaced. A portion of that project will require replacement of the drainage pipes that run through the Ellsworth Elementary Middle School baseball field. And for people who are baseball aficionados, it will go through the vicinity of the shortstop position. Pretty important position, so it's kind of unfortunate. But the project is slated to begin at the conclusion of the school year. And again, with the Department of Transportation and the city, they're going to conduct the work that impacts the school department during the summer months so as to have less impact on the school department in the fall when school has started up. I think it's important that our members of our public know. We appreciate the efforts of the city and the main Department of Transportation to minimize the impact on our schools for both of these projects. Just another example of the great cooperation that takes place in the city of Ellsworth. We have a couple of new staff members in our maintenance department. Gregory Charzuk will be a .65 maintenance man, and Lorenzo Severance will be starting as a custodian at Ellsworth High School. Letters of resignation, Custodian Mike Tinker. Kristy Smith is resigning as the Evening Coordinator of the Adult Ed Program. And Heather Pelletier, Student Services Coordinator at HCTC, is resigning and taking another position. Would also like to add, to conclude my report, that the Ellsworth Elementary School Principal Selection Advisory Committee has completed the process of screening applications and has selected candidates for the interview process, and those interviews will take place next Tuesday. We are hoping that we will have a candidate to bring forward to the board either at the regular June meeting or at a special meeting that may be called at the end of May. And again, that depends upon our work with the budget. Have nothing else unless you have questions for me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Item H, committee reports. I think Dan has talked about facilities and...
And the policy committee did not meet this month?
Okay.
So they had no business address?
Thank you. Item J, new business, student staff presentation.
Given the nature of this evening's agenda, there are a number of other presentations, so we've opted not to have a separate presentation this evening.
Discussion and consideration of out-of-country, state, and overnight trips excursions.
We have two presentations for this evening, and I'll defer to Mr. Clifford to select the first one.
We'll go out of country first.
Yes. Thank you for having me today. My name is Carolyn Cutney, and I am a Spanish and Italian talented teacher at Ellsworth High School. And I am here to entice you to allow me to take students to Madrid in Paris during April vacation next year with EF Tours, which is a very reputable tour company. I tried to plan a trip that would keep students out of class as little as possible, so it's an eight-day trip. We, there are a few options for when they would book the tickets. We could do like a Friday to Friday or a Saturday to Saturday. I think that's ideal, so they would have a day to recover from their jet lag and such. We would leave from Logan Airport, so we'd have to take a bus from Bangor to Logan Airport and fly Red Eye to Madrid. And we'd spend three days in Madrid touring Puerto del Sol, the Palacio Real, Plaza Mayor, all of the great highlights. I'm very excited about the Prado Museum. There'll be a lot of art and architecture and history discussion on the tour. And one of the things that I really like about the tour group is that they can tailor the tours to the curriculum that we teach at Ellsworth High School. So I will provide them with information that's being covered in our social studies courses, in our literature courses, in our foreign language courses, and you know, get the kids speaking as much language as possible for those three days. The fourth day, we go to Toledo, which is a small city outside of Madrid, which was where the Spanish Inquisition was, so it's a huge history portion. Take a bus there. We go back to Madrid and fly from Madrid to Paris. And I'm a Spanish teacher, I do not speak French, and I am not a French teacher. But I wanted to make this tour open to as many students as possible and include the French students as well as Spanish students and anybody else. Like students who don't take foreign language are welcome to apply or, you know, go on the trip. But if there are a ton of kids, obviously, I would like foreign language students to get preference. But if there are a ton of kids, obviously I would like foreign language students to get preference. I have no idea how many students would be interested in doing this, but many of them have expressed interest and, as well as parents too. So in Paris, we would go to the Eiffel Tower, the Arc de Triomphe, the Champs-Elysees. Um, and then there's a side tour to Versailles for a day. We would tour Versailles and the gardens, the Royal Palace, so. So that's the basic trip, and then fly from Paris back to Logan and take the bus back to Ellsworth. So I hope that we can go on this trip.
Sounds amazing.
Yes, yes, I'm very excited about it.
When was the last time that uh students from Ellsworth High School went to on a foreign, out-of-country trip?
Well, not including Quebec.
Right.
Madame Speck takes students to Quebec every year. Um, I don't know the answer to that. And I've asked around to try to find out. I've had several parents tell me that they went to Ellsworth High School, and in nineteen ninety-five, I went to Madrid in Paris or... And so it seems like it has been a long time. Um, and it's something I'd really like to revive, just for me personally, in my professional and personal life. Travel has expanded my world so much that I would love to be able to bring that to our students, so.
In Paris, uh, you mentioned going to the Prado Museum in Madrid.
Mm-hmm.
Any museums in Paris on the itinerary?
I believe the Louvre is, is definitely something that we can do. Um, the other thing that is interesting is the École Militaire, which is where Napoleon launched his plan for world domination. So in terms of which fortunately did not succeed, and for a while, he was doing pretty well. But it is definitely, absolutely, that's something we could do. And the VPA, I mean, this, this, this particular tour, we can insert a lot of art and architecture. Mr. Bates was telling me that if, if we do get approval, he would like to put in to the calculus curriculum um calculating the angles of construction of the Eiffel Tower and the wind engineering. I don't know, I'm not a calculus teacher, so I probably am not doing the best job representing that work. But there's a lot of ways we can bring the curriculum into, um, across the curriculum into places you wouldn't expect like calculus um for a trip like this, so I'm really hoping. Um, the cuisine is something else that um we're gonna be doing a whole bunch of like restaurant tastings. One of the things that's nice about the EF Tour Group is that the price is about thirty-three hundred dollars per student, but that includes pretty much everything, like except for lunch. So students would have to bring spending money for lunch, but that includes the flights, the hotels, breakfast, dinner, all of the entrance fees to all of the different activities and sites that they would see. So at the end of the day, what they're getting for that money is really a lot. So, so. The tour's also really good about um issues with student safety. There would be a trilingual or at least bilingual tour guide with us. I speak Spanish. I'm not worried at all about Madrid. I'm not really worried about Paris either. Uh, most, lots of people speak English. I was, I actually went to Quebec with Madame Speck, and I was surprised at how much French I could understand because of Spanish. But there will be a fluent French speaker at all times with us when we are in that country. They have a lot of connections at both the embassies and all of um the medical, the hospitals, medical facilities, should an emergency arise. And they have a very good insurance plan if a student had to cancel for any reason. For, it's, I, I think it's like a hundred and fifty-five dollars. It's on page eight in the packet that you have. There's a global protection plan, so I would require all of the students would, you know, spend a hundred and fifty dollars on that. So if something came up and they couldn't go, they could get their money back. I think that's a big deal. If there are any um travel advisories against going to Spain and France within forty-five days of the date of departure, then they would reimburse everybody their full money. Student safety is very, the most important thing, very important.
So fundraising for this, does students do the fundraising on their own or...
Well, no, I would, I would definitely help, and Mrs. Porson has volunteered to help as well. So we would definitely, over the next year, do several fundraisers to try to generate as much money. That's a lot of money to raise to cover everything. I don't think that's possible. What I do like about this group is that they give students a lot of options to pay, including a payment plan. So if, if we get approval tonight, we will have a parent meeting, like an information session immediately. And at that point, if students want to sign up, they would put a deposit down, and then they could do pay, monthly payments over the next year. And I'm encouraging them all to get summer jobs to save their pennies. How bad do you want to go? You can make this happen, so. And I think we can make it happen, so. I hope that we have the chance.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Do you want to hear the next one or do you want to...
Are you looking for a motion now, or do you want to do the other one as well?
I have to do this one. They're two different.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the out-of-country excursion as presented.
It's not good.
In discussion.
I think it's a great opportunity.
I think our students are very lucky to have teachers that are willing to spend their April vacation with them.
And all the planning.
Maybe you ought to take the school board with them.
All those in favor?
Thank you. The out-of-state overnight trip.
Good evening. Thank you for um fitting me into your agenda for this evening. I'm Heidi Omler. Um, I teach Social Studies at the high school. And the Social Studies Department kind of collectively um would like to take students, I guess the rest of the students that won't be going to Spain, uh, to Washington DC. Um, and it would, it would be a collective effort um between myself and Mr. Malbon and then Mr. Raven. And so um the, the trip would be um open to students from um my Holocaust and Genocide Studies class, the um honors, sorry, honors government, and then honors and dual enrollment US history. And so then the three teachers that teach those classes would be, would be accompanying them. Um, it's basically three days, uh, and we'd be flying out of Portland, um, and would stay um in, in DC. And it's the exact same tour company that Mrs. Cutney will be using. Um, so the, the amount of the tour, which is fifteen hundred dollars a student, um, includes their hotel, same deal, except for lunch. Um, and we have a tour guide with us um the entire time. And um, you know, basically, it's our nation's capital, um, and I'm a Social Studies teacher. So it just seems to, you know, to be an opportunity. Um, the agenda, the um itinerary that you have, um, that they gave um us is kind of like an optional thing. It pretty much lists every single Smithsonian available. Um, we won't be seeing all of them. Um, we do get some choice there. Um, one of the um side trips that will be with this is with my Holocaust and Genocide Studies class. We'll be going one of the days to the Holocaust Museum. Um, and I have studied there myself, so that I know that they have programs if teachers bring students. Um, so we'll be pretty much spending the entire day, and then the other students will be with the tour guide because the museum will provide us with a tour guide. Uh, and then they can do a couple of the Smithsonian's while we're at the, at the Holocaust Museum. Um, so other than that, we'll be together, you know, for the, all the other tours. But the list that you have, like I say, is, is optional as far as the museums. Um, we'll see, you know, the monuments at night, um, Mount Vernon, all those things, all the highlights. And the um dates are, are flexible um with the tour company. We can leave on the Sunday of April break. And I don't honestly know if that's Easter this coming year or not. I didn't look at that. Uh, or we can leave the Monday, um, but the, the price they gave us is flexible within three days. So you could leave Sunday, Monday, or Tuesday, and then stay the three days, and it would be the exact same price. So um for every ten students that goes um in the country, um, a chaperone gets to go for free. So that would be the three chaperones, and then Mr. Gunn has offered um to go if we have more than, than the thirty students to go, so. Questions? Fundraising is similar to Mrs. Cutney, although it's not as much money. Um, I'm not looking that we will raise every, every dime for this. Um, we will do some. And like any of the trips that, that the tour group does, um, you know, kids can pay outright. Parents can just simply pay for it. Or if we do, um, you know, fundraisers together, the students that participate, um, and all the money is handled through the tour agency. So basically, I would just send a list of kids that should be credited, you know, with the amount of money that we're sending, and they split it up equally. Um, but again, they can pay monthly. It, it honestly depends on them. And then um the, at least, and I'm not sure about the, about the out-of-country, but in-country, I know that, that the tour company itself also offers opportunities for the kids to raise money. So that's something that they might be able to do as well, independent, you know, of me or, or the other students. That would be their choice, so.
What is the cost per student for this trip?
About fifteen hundred dollars, yeah.
And a dime or...
They're flying out of Portland, yes, sorry. They would fly out of Portland, yeah, so we would just need to get to Portland and back, so.
I move we accept the in-country trip as presented.
Second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Again, I want to go.
Second read of policies. BDE and BDEE. Am I in the wrong place?
Yep, you're right.
Yeah, right.
You gave a motion.
I make a motion to approve the second read and adopt the following policies as recommended by the Policy Committee, BDE, Board Standing Committees, and BDEE, Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee.
Second.
Just as a note, you know, the reason we're, we're looking at adding this committee was that we felt that we needed some input into um textbooks, selection of textbooks, et cetera. So um within the next couple of weeks, next board meeting, um, we'll be asking a couple of you to be representatives of this committee.
And the policy that you just approved directs the chair to appoint members to that. And I would agree. I think that is a, a good policy to pass. It gives the board an opportunity for oversight of their statutory responsibilities, but it's also an educational opportunity for the curricular workings of the school department.
With Rachel saying that they're going to be meeting on the twenty-third, this is something we'll have to be doing right off so that we've got some input on the, at that meeting on the twenty-third, so.
Also, you're welcome to join, if anyone would like to join us at the meeting, you're welcome to come. We'll have, um, we're gonna have, both of the publishers will be doing live webinars, answering the questions teachers have sent in advance. So if anyone would like to join us at that meeting, you're welcome to come.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other discussion? Um, no, just a note that neither of these policies have had any changes since the first read. Okay. All those in favor? Thank you. Discussion and consideration of surplus property, policy DN.
Actually, that, um, that should have been removed from the agenda. That was uh the item that I did in my report. It did not require board action. It required a report.
All right. Okay, item five, discussion and consideration of teacher leave of absent requests.
And members, you have um two separate requests um in front of you. Should have been included in your packet. My recommendation is you take up the um leave of absence request from January through March first. Uh, you have that in front of you. Um, I have, I've spoken with a teacher, and this is one that I would recommend that the board approve. Certainly, if, if you would like to have further information, um, you could opt to go into executive session.
So I make a motion to approve teacher request for leave of absence as presented and recommended by the superintendent.
I second that. Discussion? All those in favor?
And the second one, uh, would say the same. This is a request um for use of sick leave days. And I, I think the rationale is explained uh very clearly in uh the written request. But certainly, if the board would like to go into executive session for further information, you could opt to do so. But I would recommend that this be approved as well.
I move that we approve the teacher request for use of sick di- sick leave days as presented and recommended by Mr. Higgins.
I second that. Discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Consideration of acceptance of grant, grant award.
Yeah, I believe this is also included in your packet. Um, Principal Clifford and Athletic Director Frost um wrote a grant to see if they could find funding to replace the ten-year-old Ellsworth Eagle. And certainly, it's gonna be sad to see that old eagle go. Uh, but as you can see, they have been successfully awarded the grant. We're asking for, uh, this evening for you to acknowledge acceptance of that grant award.
Make a motion that we accept the, the grant as awarded.
I second that.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Discussion and consideration of Hancock County Technical Center graduation standards.
Good evening. I'll enlarge this. So tonight, I'm coming to you to present um work that has been going on for the last several years um and to discuss kind of the evolution of the work, and then present to you a final recommendation. I want to kind of take you back um a couple of years. A few years ago, um, when the Common Core standards came out for English and Math, the Department of Education, um, Career and Technical Education members started some collaborative work between academic teachers at high schools and career and technical centers to examine the academic Common Store, Core standards with industry standards of different career and technical programs. And I was really lucky that the programs they picked to do the first few times they did this work were programs we had. So we were able to send our HCTC teachers, but also teachers from Ellsworth High School, Bucksport High School, and Sumner High School to this work. And what they did was they would bring all the carpentry teachers together from around the state, a s- group of math teachers from around the state, and a group of English teachers. And they would all work together to find where there were commonalities so that students could earn proficiencies and proficiency-based errors in their career and technical program rather than just in the traditional classroom settings. So that work went on. Simultaneously, while that work was happening, our teachers at HCTC were crosswalking industry standards in Rubicon Atlas and entering their units of study as well as their identification of standards at that same time. Then, um, probably a year later, sending districts all started identifying their graduation standards for their students in a proficiency-based diploma system. Um, and that took place across the county. Everybody did different processes. But now, all high schools have their own graduation standards documents um that they have for their students from their high schools. So our next work was analyzing all of the different high schools grad standards. So what I did, and what you'll see up here, is I took all of our sending high schools' graduation standard documents and did a crosswalk. So for each content area, with the exception of world language, because there's no world language in career and technical education, you'll see, like for English, this is the sample, that these standards are what are present in every graduation standard document across the county and which high school they're present in. So you can see the commonalities in the first standard. Um, all five major high schools in Hancock County have that as graduation standard. So to me, that says, that's a really bolded, highlighted standard that we should be really working on in career and technical education because all kids that come to us need access to that in a multiple way. Um, and we did this for every single content area. So what I did was I went through, and if you look at a different content area, like math, math was a little bit different. Some high schools used mathematical practices and some use more content standards. Um, so we kind of flushed out so that everybody could see where different high schools were in math. And then the same thing in um social studies. Social studies is a little bit different. Um, some use main learning results, some use National Council for Social Study standards. So you started seeing some variation, but what was the same was the content topics. So for social studies, we used content topics um going through for social studies. And then science was probably the biggest difference because some high schools have moved to next-generation science standards, and some are using main learning results still. And that still hasn't been determined. So we were able to break each content area down. Once I had this crosswalk done, um, then we were able to take the graduation standards and crosswalk them with each of the program industry standards. So what I will show you is an example of a crosswalk. So this information, as well as the high school graduation crosswalk, was presented to three major groups. It was presented to high school principals across the county. It was presented to all curriculum coordinators across the county, and it was presented to the HCTC advisory... and it was presented to the HCTC Advisory Council, which includes all sending superintendents and school board members. And this is what was presented to them, and this is the format we used for each program at HCTC. So for each program, we identified what the industry standard was for students and what they had to meet for industry standard. I then documented whether or not the Department of Education had done some of this work or not, and if we had participated in it because I wanted people to know it wasn't just us pie in the sky, that this work was done statewide. And then I did a draft proposal of what kids should be able to demonstrate for academic standards. So the complicated part of this is that each high school is approaching things a little bit differently. Some are still in a credit system, some are talking about experiences for students in content areas for experiences in English or for credits in English, and some have gone straight standards already, and some are on an evolution. So I had to do a proposal that included all three of those things. So for each program, what you see is the content, and then either a credit or an experience, and then the list of standards. And these were the graduation standards that were common at all high schools. So traditionally, career and technical programs, right now, students get three elective credits, let's say, for one year at HCTC. With this proposal, they now wouldn't just get three elective credits. They might get a credit of English, a credit of health, and then a credit of elective. So that kids can get opportunities to meet academic, um, standards at their high school. So no matter what high school they're at right now, whether it's the credit, the experience, or the standard, we have some documentation about what kids should be getting. So we did this for every program. Um, I think we worked really hard to maintain the integrity of academic standards at high schools. I don't think we overdid. In some cases, I think we underdid to kind of wait and see how things roll out. This is a document, um, that was unanimously approved by high school principals, curriculum coordinators, and the HCTC Advisory Council. And CTE now is, will be a documented pathway for kids, um, on graduation. So, and since, um, the superintendents met, RSU 24 has voted and adopted this, RSU 25, MDI adopted it last night, and then we're looking for Ellsworth Board approval. There were a couple of changes that we found. As it's been presented, of course, you pick up things that you wouldn't normally pick up. So this is, um, mainly typos. And revisions and updates. So this is, um, more of a cheat sheet now for guidance counselors. And I've been meeting, started meeting with high school guidance counselors because now as they schedule students, what will have to happen is they'll schedule with these kinds of things in mind. Now, if they identify their freshman year that a student is probably gonna take CNA, then they probably shouldn't be scheduled for health their sophomore year because they're gonna get health in the CNA program. There's a variety of scheduling things that will come up as a result of this. But this now will standardize experiences for all kids across Hancock County. In the past, some kids at schools have gotten credits academically and others haven't. This now is gonna make it seamless across the county. If kids switch high schools, this'll still be in play and it's equitable across the board. With Senator Langley's work on proficiency-based and having career and technical education as a pathway, this falls right in line and dovetails with that. So I think that with this adoption, we're gonna be really ahead of the game, much more so than other CTE schools and other parts of the state with giving these opportunities to kids. So I'd welcome any questions you might have.
Amy, did a team do this work together?
So I did the graduation cross, the high school graduation crosswalk. And then the teachers have done the crosswalk of the industry standards and Commons Core standards in general. And then I used their work to do this, and then had individual meetings with each teacher to make sure, did I miss anything? Am I oversaying anything? This is what I've seen you do in the classroom. And then we finalized things a couple of different times in draft form as a school, and then pushed it out for people to review and examine.
Looks really good.
Labor of love. And I do need a motion.
I make a motion to approve Hancock County Technical Se- Technical Center graduation standards as presented and recommended by the HCTC Advisory Committee.
I second that.
Discussion?
Looks great, a lot of work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you. Item eight, administrative contract.
Yeah, members of the board, uh, Personnel Committee met, uh, for the purpose of reviewing a contract. You have the recommendation from that committee in front of you.
I make a motion to approve the amendments to, do I say a name, Dan? To Amy Bowles' contract and accord with the terms and conditions of employment as recommended by the Personnel Committee.
I second that.
Discussion? All of us in favor? Item nine, approval of the Elsworth School Department, 2017-18 budget, and the authorization to submit to the Els- Ellsworth City Council.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Thomas. Members of the board, members of the audience, and members of the viewing public, I'm pleased to present the proposed FY18 Ellsworth School Department budget this evening to the board and to Ellsworth citizens. A great deal of work has gone into this document, um, you know, because you've seen several iterations of it as, as a finance committee and a board. I'd like to commend the efforts of our administrators, our staff members, uh, for putting together the budget and doing all of the work necessary to get it to the format that it's in to be presented this evening. School Department administration staff and you as a board have successfully built on the foundation established during our first year of operation as a new school department. Consistent with our approved vision and mission, our overall goal continues to focus on restoring this school department to the status of one of the most premier school systems in the state of Maine, one that provides an outstanding and comprehensive educational and co- and extracurricular experience for all students, and plays an integral role in the continued growth and development of the city of Ellsworth. We understand and appreciate our role as a partner in the desired economic development of the city. We also appreciate the great relationship with and enjoy the support of our city council and the citizens of Ellsworth. The budget preparation efforts are a combination of an assessment of current and future needs, sustainability for future budget years, and appropriately funding our educational program with a budget that is fiscally responsible for our citizens and provides a program that is one that we can be proud of but is also attractive to our area communities who have the ability to send students to school in Ellsworth. And this budget does that. Just for, uh, our citizens, the initial budget draft that was presented to the board at your February 28th workshop and to the city council at their April 7th Finance Committee meeting was developed to continue to move our school department forward toward all of our established and identified goals. In that particular draft, which had an increase of over 1.25 million dollars, were a number of new staffing positions designed to enhance instructional practices and meet operational needs and efficiencies. First, we were seeking to add a full-time math specialist, which is similar to our Title I teachers that, uh, Mrs. R- uh, Corman Ramos mentioned earlier this evening. Someone designed to work with our students, uh, to improve their math achievement. We also had included in the budget a Section 504 teacher, whose responsibilities would be to assume oversight of the student, caseload of students who are identified as eligible for 504 services, to coordinate those services and provide services to eligible students. Based upon earlier enrollment estimates at the high school, we sought to add and include in the original draft of the budget halftime additional positions in math, English, and world language. We also included in that budget draft a halftime instructional coach, who currently is funded half-time through our Title I program. And by using Title I funds, that instructional coach is able to work at teachers at EEMS. We were seeking to add local funding to cover the other half of that position so that that instructional coach could work with our teachers at Ellsworth High School. And this position was important because with all the work that you've heard discussed and citizens have heard discussed with regard to transitioning to a proficiency-based instructional model, an instructional coach, the efforts there would be to work with teachers to enhance their repertoire of instructional practices to move forward in this system. We also included in the initial draft a new academic teacher at Hancock County Technical Center, and that would be to replace an EdTech III position that was in place this past school year, whose purpose was to provide academic programming to our students who attend Hancock County Technical Center all day. In reviewing, uh, the success of that position, it was determined that we needed a teacher-level position rather than an EdTech position. That's why that position's included in our budget. Also, to comply with new staff and student ratio requirements for the early childhood program, in particular, the, uh, childcare component, we included funding for a new EdTech III, uh, to serve that program. Focusing on our needs, um, we included in the initial draft of the budget an instructional technology technician. The purpose for that person would be to come in and help reduce the caseload of technology-related help requests that circulate through our system. Currently, our tech director and her staff are working with fulfilling all of those requests for help support tickets and also working to integrate technology into our curriculum. What we found is the help tickets make it more integral that all of our staff spends more time working on repair, replacement, training rather than the integration piece. So we thought that was an important position. We also included a full-time administrative assistant level position. Half of that position would be to manage, uh, state agency client caseload that Ellsworth is responsible for. And that's a half of the position that comes along with increased funding because we're able to bill for those services. The other half of that position, we wanted to make it a full-time position, would be to address a variety of other tasks that take place across our district throughout the calendar of the school year. And we're talking about enrollment, we're talking about free and reduced lunch, applications, things of that nature that increased administrative support would facilitate. Additionally, the final piece for new positions would be three new EdTech III positions at EEMS to provide services to our incoming students who are identified with specific needs. Of the 1.25 million dollars of increase, that represents about $400,000 in salaries. Also included in that initial draft of the budget was a projected 12% increase in Anthem premiums. And that was, comes with a $400,000 price tag. Also included in the initial draft were equipment and renovation to transform the academic classroom at HCTC into a science lab to accommodate the full-time biomedical program at Hancock County Technical Center. What you were looking at there would be roughly $95,000 in equipment needs and $50,000 in construction services. Include a $100,000 increase for capital improvements and equipment across the district. Also included in the initial draft would be, um, funding to support two new buses to replace, uh, and upgrade our existing bus inventory, buses that meet, uh, the criteria for replacement. Because one of our current lease purchase agreements, we're making the final payment this year, adding two buses would result in approximately $20,000 increase. I mentioned profec- uh, proficiency-based, um, education and the transition to that. We've included additional dollars for professional development opportunities to support our teachers in doing the necessary work to transition to that system. We have a $97,000 increase for tuition expenses for students who need to be educated outside of our system. And just as a refresher, um, we provide a variety of services for students in our system and we serve all students who attend Ellsworth schools. There are some instances where the services that we're able to provide in our local schools cannot meet the students' needs. In times when that occurs, we need to look for outside resources, and we have some outside resources that are available to us. Based upon enrollment of students and in our schools, we're looking at a $97,000 increase on that line. Uh, you heard Mrs. Corman Ramos talk about math resources. We've included $45,000 in the budget for new math resources, which cover the entire K through 12 grade span. An item that comes up annually, uh, refinishing of the gym floor at Ellsworth High School, which is a $25,000 price tag. An increase of $50,000 in co- and extracurricular increases, which represented, uh, some new stipends, uh, for unified sports programming, for taking on responsibility for the football program. A program that has been funded by the efforts of many generous citizens who spend a lot of time fundraising. Also to support athletic trainer services at both the middle school and the high school, and to fund a garden coach advisor position at the middle school and the high school with the departure of a successful theory experiment with the Food Corps program. Additionally, we had $13,000 built in for summer teacher work. That entire list of items included in the initial draft of the budget were designed to address a specific need and a specific purpose, and they meet our goals in moving the school department forward. So I'll stop at that point and switch to revenues just for a moment. With regard to revenues, and this is one of the challenges of doing budgeting on an annual basis, the revenue side of the budget is a little more challenging to come to a final line on than is the expenditure side of the budget. Revenue projections for the budget that was presented to you in February and to the city council in April were based upon the Department of Education's initial subsidy report, which was issued on February 16th, 2017. Before I go any further, I just want to stress so that everyone listening tonight, particularly members of the viewing public, understand those numbers are preliminary and very much likely to change pending final approval of a budget by the 128th legislature. With that being said, those preliminary numbers were favorable for the Ellsworth School Department compared to last year's figures. What we're looking at is receiving an additional subsidy amount of $151,199 and a $35,000 decrease in what is known as the mill rate expectation. The mill rate expectation is the required local contribution from our citizens necessary to receive the full amount of state subsidy. Again, the required amount that we have to contribute goes down, but the subsidy goes up, so that's a positive development. And again, I stress, that's preliminary. Other sources of revenue that we were, uh, working on at that particular point in time were the fund balance, sometimes known as the balance forward, and tuition receipts from students who attend Ellsworth High School from outside of Ellsworth. Just to touch briefly on the fund balance line, our objective with that line is to maintain an acceptable balance that provides a contingency, um, in the event that additional funding is needed, but that is considered over multiple years, not just a one-year basis. Also to comply with statutory requirements with regard to having an unallocated balance that does not exceed 3% of your gross budget. Over the past three budgets, uh, the amount of fund balance allocations applied to the budget to offset local expenditures has been unsustainable. In the first two years, we were able to apply 1.2 million dollars against local expenditures. We needed to reduce that to $850,000 for FY17. And the plan is to continue to monitor that amount and reduce it so we do not have to rely upon such high numbers to offset local expenses in the budget. To help us with maintaining the statutory responsibility for the FY18 budget, the initial draft includes proposing allocating a little over $100,000 to the creation of a capital reserve fund for future capital projects, specifically the roof replacement project at Hancock County Technical Center. At the time, with regard to tuition, we were anticipating a slight increase in tuition revenues. The numbers we had at the time allowed us to project an increase of just about $30,000 in tuition revenues. So with all of that being said, the draft budget presented represented an increase of just under 7%, or as I said, about 1.4 million dollars, and a projected local increase of nearly 14%. Certainly, working with our administrative team and working with our finance committee and our board, we all recognize that, uh, resources are not infinite and that that's an unacceptable level of a budget to move forward. In my meeting with the council on April 7th, uh, they certainly concurred with that rationale. Now, since the budget discussion with the board and the city's finance committee, that budget proposal has undergone significant change. Using what we know cautious and cautiously anticipated as revenues, along with the recognition, um, that resources for the city budget are finite, the proposal that we have before you this evening for your consideration supports our core programming for students and maintains our current level of services and appropriately supports our facilities. While we will maintain the current level of services, it's important to understand that we will see a reduction in staff, and I'll address that specifically in a moment. However, some of the changes that have taken place since the April 7 meeting with the councils, city council finance committee, have been a reduction of $490,000 in personnel. The full-time math interventionist, the section 504 teacher, both were removed from the budget, as was the half-time locally funded instructional coach. Because our freshman incoming class at Ellsworth High School is going to be smaller than the freshman class we have this year, I just want to take a minute to explain why. The number of tuition students that we anticipate is the same as the number of students that came to Ellsworth High School this year. The reason that the freshman incoming class is smaller is because we have a smaller class that has traveled through EEMS. We have about 65 students who will be coming forth from 8th grade at EMS to Ellsworth High School as compared to over 80 this year. When you look at the enrollments back through grade 7 through grade kindergarten, this is by far the lowest 8th grade group that we're moving forward. We do have a group down around the 4th grade that's between 75 and 80. Other than that, we're talking between 85 and 95 all the way through, so this is certainly an anomaly. But because those numbers are so low, the increase of half-time positions in math, English, science, and world language are not necessary. The full-time administrative assistant that we were seeking to add, we've taken away the locally funded portion of that, which is designed to provide support for a variety of tasks across the district, but have maintained the state agency client half of that position. And again, the reason we're able to maintain that is because we're able to bill for those services. The Ed Tech position to support the early childhood program, we've reduced it by .4, so it's going to be a three-day-a-week position, but with those three days a week, that's sufficient to support the childcare component of the early childhood program. We were hoping to increase the carpentry position to full-time this year. The carpentry position will stay at half-time program this year. And we will be seeing the elimination of two elementary level teaching positions, and we will not be filling one middle school teaching position. Those reductions are about $490,000 from the previous iteration of the budget. Now again, I want to stress, the additions that we were asking for were not frills, they were not luxuries, they were items designed through our assessment of needs, looking at our student data, that we need to move our school department forward. But even with the reduction of those, we will be maintaining our current level of services. In facilities and transportation, we see a $100,000 decrease from the last time we presented the budget. We've eliminated one of the new bus lease purchases, and instead of purchasing a new van to support student transportation, we're going to purchase a used van. We've also had to defer a number of facilities projects, and I'll talk about specifically what they are. Parking lots at HCTC, we're talking the parking lot by the main entrance and also the parking lot on the lower side of the school. We're seeking to expand that parking lot, to add additional parking, and also resurface them. Those will be deferred to a following year. The gymnasium floor at Ellsworth High School, we do need to get that done. However, that has been taken out of the budget. It is not a safety issue. If it's a safety issue, we would not be taking it out, but we need to bear in mind that that's something that needs to be done over the next couple of years. There are some minor equipment items and some storage requests that have also been taken out of the initial draft of the budget. One of the beneficial pieces that came about since we talked about our budget a few months ago was we received notification from Anthem with regard to health insurance premiums. We talked about projecting a 12% increase. Last year, it was an 11% increase. We're very fortunate this year, we have a 0% increase in premiums. That represents a $400,000 reduction in the budget requests. With regard to stipends, we see a $57,000 decrease in requested stipends. The football program will not come under the school department overall supervision this year, and we've removed the athletic trainer positions from the budget. That's to the tune of about $57,000. Technology, we've been very fortunate in the Ellsworth School Department and the city of Ellsworth to see such great expenditures and support and investment in technology for the city and the school department. One of the things our tech department has worked at this year through a number of scenarios, one of them being some changes to the MLTI program, we've been able to identify some efficiencies in our technology program that are not going to reduce services and not going to reduce capabilities. That's about $35,000. And as we've talked about every time we've talked about budget, I spend a lot of time reviewing our budget proposals for historical expenditure patterns, and we update those as the years go on. Between the time this budget was presented to the council on April 7th and this evening, have come up with about $50,000 worth of those historical expenditure patterns that people will not notice. Again, I want to stress, while the positions that we had in there are goals and objectives of our mission and vision, that are not included in this budget, the budget is a positive step forward for the school system and the city. It will adequately and appropriately fund the educational program for our students, and it will be fiscally responsible to our citizens. Again, we would like to move forward and move towards our goals much more quickly, but we certainly realize is that the resources will not allow us to move that quickly. So the overall expenditure side of the budget, this before you for your consideration this evening, shows an overall increase when you include adult education of $318,377.86 or 1.57%. A budget at this level, if approved, would require an increase of $348,349.31 in total local appropriation. And that's a 3.15% increase over the local appropriation last year. If you remember last year, the school budget did not result in an increase in local appropriation at all. If we, if we need to reduce further from here, we will be looking at a reduction in services and programming. With regard to the revenue side, again, I talked a little bit earlier in the presentation, the preliminary numbers from the Department of Education have not changed. We are still seeing a decrease in $35,000 in the mill rate expectation. We're still seeing an increase of $151,199 in subsidy. We're seeing an increase of $18,000 in adult education subsidy. Between tuition and miscellaneous revenues, we're anticipating a net increase of just over $67,000. And working with our business manager, Carolyn Heller, we've reviewed current year expenditures and current year revenue patterns, and based upon our projections for an end-of-year balance, combined with the audited end-of-year balance for FY16, we were able to increase the fund balance line by $50,000. So with that being said, if I could just take a few brief minutes to go through the cost centers and talk about what the changes for the cost centers are. With regular instruction, which is your regular instructional program for grades K through 12, we're seeing an increase of .17% or just under $10,000. And again, that does represent the reduction of the equivalent of 2.5 full-time equivalent positions. That was achieved, we're looking at student teacher ratios would be a maximum of 18 for grades K through 4 and 22 for grades 9 through 12. Under special instruction, we have a 7.27% increase, which represents about $225,000. I mentioned three new Ed Techs that we're required to have to provide services to students identified with needs, that represents $92,000. The new .5 full-time equivalent administrative assistant does come with a price tag of $22,000. However, again, we will be able to offset that with revenues by billing. The other place where special instruction increases is tuition for out-of-district placements, which is $97,000. Career and technical education, we see a 25 and a half percent increase here of $330,000. I'd like to spend a couple of minutes on that. Of that $330,000 increase, about $157,000 of that comes with the increase of the biomedical program from a half-time program to a full-time program. Again, ju- just for our viewing public's understanding and information, we started that program last year, and we housed it at Ellsworth High School, where we had space for half of the day for use of a biology lab. The reason that we housed it there was because we did not want to enter into an expensive retrofit of Hancock County Technical Center for a program that while we believed was going to be successful, we had no proof that it was going to be. So we housed it at Ellsworth High School. Certainly, the program has demonstrated its success and its popularity. We're seeing an increase in students from the range of 10 this year to 25 who have signed up next year. So in order to accommodate that as a full-time program, it needs to go to HCTC. One-time equipment costs to house the new laboratory would be about $95,000. And in the maintenance lines, we're talking a total of $63,000 for renovation, and that will include doing the work to make that space, the academic classroom into a biology lab, but also to retrofit the early childhood space to allow for an academic classroom to be housed in that space. It's one of the few places in the school department where we had the luxury of having additional space. So you're talking, that's half of your increase there, but that's a program that is supported throughout the city and supported by the council and certainly supported by the board. The positive news is, we're anticipating just under $58,000 in additional tuition revenues for that program to offset those expenses. Also at HCTC, we talked earlier that we are replacing an Ed Tech position with an academic teacher. When you factor in what we budget for a new teacher, that's about $63,000. The .6 full-time equivalent early childhood Ed Tech is $18,000. When we talk about the expansion of the biomedical program at HCTC, we also have to talk about two satellite programs that exist for the Hancock County Technical Center program. One is the welding program, which is housed at Bucksport High School. One is a new program in marine trades that was approved a couple of months ago that's housed at Mountain Desert Island High School. We have six Ellsworth High School students who will be planning to attend the welding program in Bucksport next year. And as you heard earlier, one of our tuition students that goes to Bucksport for that program is testifying in front of the legislature tomorrow. We also have two students who have expressed an interest in attending the marine trades program at Mountain Desert Island High School. Now, just as students who come to Hancock County Tech from other schools to take advantage of the programs there, our students who go to the satellite programs have to pay tuition there, so we're looking at a $30,000 increase in tuition lines for our students who'll be attending those programs. Also, you heard Mrs. Bowles talk about industry standards. Every year, we have programs that need to upgrade their equipment to ensure that they still are able to meet those industry standards, so for carpentry, culinary arts, early childhood programs, and also to provide computer support for the new academic teacher, we're looking at $54,000 of increased expenditures at HCTC. The other instruction line, which is lines that talk about co-curricular, extracurricular, summer programming, and so forth, we're talking about an increase of just under 3% or $16,000. And the biggest bump in that, aside from a small bump in stipends, would be $7,500 increase in transportation or extracurricular events. Student and staff services, which is where your guidance program, your school health program, your curriculum and your assessment, your instructional tech technology programs are funded, will actually see a decrease of 1.21%. And you may say, why is that program decreasing? And I mentioned earlier that we're seeing a reduction in technology expenses and some efficiencies there. We can see a decrease of $20,000 on that particular line. Again, to me, that's a demonstration of taking a look at the resources that we have and using them effectively and efficiently. And again, that's something that, despite the fact that you see some increases here, that's a concept that is mirrored throughout this budget proposal, effective and efficient use of resources. System administration, which is your school board, your superintendent's office and your business office, we have a 2.58% increase. What you have in that would be about $7,700 in wages, $11,000 in software maintenance and upgrades, which are necessary. And we've offset that by a reduction in supplies and training that we haven't used of $5,000, a small increase in system administration. School administration, where you fund your high school principals offices, which include their administrative assistants, we're seeing a 5.89% increase there, or $46,000. That is taken up in wages and insurance. And even though we had a net no increase in insurance, there are times that changes in personnel often result in increases in insurance, and that's a factor in this particular increase. Facilities maintenance, a reduction of .07% or $1,500. Transportation, we're seeing an increase of 3.82%, $34,471. What's included in that increase would be a used van to address increased student transportation needs, $15,000. An increase in transportation for students who are housed out of district and transported to be tuitioned outside of the district of $17,000. And we do have right now one new bus in there, which represents a $20,000 increase. As of this morning, by the way, that bus has not yet been approved. Debt service, obviously, we're seeing a decrease in debt service as your years go on with your debt service payments on EEMS, both the state portion and the local portion. We see a reduction of 10.45%. But also remind people that this is the second year that our budget includes a repayment of the bond funds that the school department borrowed from the city in our first year of operation, and that's about $175,000. Food service, we have a 12 and a half percent decrease, and I think that's a testament to the good work that the food service program is doing. There was a small increase in prices of a nickel at EEMS. That price increase is dictated by a price equity tool that we're required to use on an annual basis, but also we've seen an increase in participation in the program, so certainly a lot of hard work with our food service people. Adult edu- excuse me, adult education program shows an increase of 4.1% or $9,000. What we found through the budgeting process were a position that was not budgeted last year. Also, if you've had the opportunity to visit the adult education space, you know that even though it was an improvement over the space we had in the prior year, not necessarily in amount of space, but in collaboration with the university center, it was pretty tight fit, so we've increased a little bit of money to get additional space for that program for next year. That represents the entire increase in your budget of 1.57% or a local increase of 3.15%. But I would just reiterate, when you look at the increases that the budget represents, aside from the increase in the biomedical program, the need to add Ed Techs to provide services for students and to meet statutory requirements, the budget provides the same level of services to our students that we were able to do this year. As a school system, we're built on an expectation of continual improvement each year. It's important that we support our budget, and I'm asking you as a board to support the budget this evening. We need to demonstrate that we support the budget because our role in providing educational program for all of our students, and I reiterate, all of our students consistent with our mission, and to make our program one of the best programs around, will lead to increases in student enrollment at the high school, we need to demonstrate that we're willing to do that. We do recognize that the budget does result in an increase in local appropriation. Again, it's necessary at this point in time to maintain those services, and I would also reiterate that the budget that we have for this year did not result in an increase in the local tax base. The one other piece that I would add, we did have a conversation with the city council, and I know I've discussed it with you. We do expect through the state's budget process that additional subsidy funding is going to flow to school departments. Unfortunately, we do not know how much, if any, and when that's going to happen. What we have included in draft warrant articles for the city to consider when they meet Monday evening is an article that provides for three options to use any additional subsidy money. One would be to fund any expenditures that would be approved by the school board, and certainly through our budget work, you know that there are still some things that we would really like to put back in this budget. That, we're hoping that the city will consider that as one option. A second option would be to put any additional funds into an approved capital reserve account. The third option is to use it to reduce the local appropriation. In my previous conversation with the council, while certainly they were not asked to take action on it, there seemed to be some interest in considering adding all three of those options into a warrant article and perhaps considering a combination of those three if we do get additional subsidy funds. And I think that would be a very wise and prudent decision. So with that being said, I know that was a lot of information for our citizens, and I know you as a board have heard all of this before. Are there questions that you have before I turn it over to Mrs. Thomas to ask you to take action on the budget?
I have one question. So I believe there's a line in the budget, loan repayment to the city of Ellsworth?
Yes.
And that was, that loan was to cover the one-time costs of withdrawal from the RSU. And we had a grace period of, how many years to start paying?
This is the first year, so this-
So this, this year, this current year, we-
Current year budget is the first year of that payment.
Yeah. So when we did our budget last year, we ended up with a budget with no increase to local taxpayers, despite the fact that we were, had to embark on this loan repayment, which was, over the course of this fiscal year, how much does that loan payment entail approximately?
About $177,000.
Okay. And of course, we'll be doing that loan payment this, this coming year and for the three years afterwards, right?
This will be the second year of five, five years of repayment.
Five years of repayment, so, so that's one of the items that's in our budget is paying back that loan to the city of Ellsworth to help us with the one-time costs of withdrawal that the voters approve. So I think it's worth noting that, that that's part of what's in this budget, and that we didn't increase the budget last year, even though- increase the budget last year, even though we had to take on that burden.
We we did not increase the local, we did not increase the the local tax burden.
Right.
Because of some fortunate numbers from Augusta, we were able to increase-
Yeah. The budget, but not the local-
The budget, but not the local base, that's correct.
That's what I was trying to say.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all.
Other questions?
I move that we approve the Ellsworth School Department twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen budget and authorize Mr. Higgins to submit it to the Ellsworth City Council.
I second that. Discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you. Mrs. Thomas, could I make one comment? The council is scheduled to vote on the budget that will be submitted to them at their next meeting on Monday. We did a presentation similar to the one we just did for our citizens and for you with the council. I do not know if it will be as detailed a presentation Monday evening, but they will be taking action. I've also been invited to come and meet with their finance committee Friday morning to answer any questions they may have on, action taken tonight. So we'll certainly let you know how that goes. But just to remind our citizens that the council will be voting on that budget on Monday. And longer term, and I know Mr. Fuller is here this evening and is going to take notes on this, once the council does approve a budget, it will be submitted to the voters for the budget validation referendum, and that is scheduled for June thirteenth. Thank you.
One day before the medieval fair.
Item K, calendar and announcements. Meeting schedule, policy committee meeting, June fifth, in the Ellsworth School Department Conference Room at eight thirty a.m. School Board Workshop, May twenty-second, Ellsworth School Department Conference Room at six p.m. And school board meeting Tuesday, June thirteenth, at Hancock County Tech Center at six thirty p.m. I believe that because of the election, we are meeting in this room and there is also something going on at EEMS, so our meeting will be at Hancock County Tech Center.
That is correct. The election is taking place on the thirteenth, and the results will dance at EEMS that evening. So we will go to HCTC for the meeting. But we've had meetings at HCTC before, and it's a it's a good space for a meeting.
It's a great space.
With regard to the workshop, I would remind members that it is possible that through our work with the budget that we may take up the need for a special meeting. If so, we could use that evening to do so. Not sure whether it would be necessary, but in the event that we need to, just to put that on your calendar.
Item L, adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn the board meeting.
I second that.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Eight oh three.